Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. My name is Kevin Burns. I am the mayor of Geneva, and I have the pleasure of welcoming nine of the 10 council members who are here with us this evening, some virtually and some live. With that, I ask our, excuse me, our city administrator, Stephanie Dawkins, to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Bruno here.
Burkhart? Ruby?
Ruby here.
Caven? Kilburg?
Kilburg here.
Casarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Maladra here.
Marx?
Marx here.
McGowan?
McGowan here.
Swanson?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, I did correspond with Alderman Caven earlier this evening. He is busy with a work commitment, so he will not be able to join us. He sends his regards, of course. We'd like to begin our council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I think there's nobody better to ask than our chief of the fire department, Mr. Mike Antonori.
(Crosstalk). The United States, we are two, under God, indivisible, just as God.
Thank you, chief. Ladies and gentlemen, the meeting tonight is being conducted semi-virtually in compliance with the governor's executive orders limiting in-person gatherings to the lesser of 50 people or 50% of overall room capacity under Phase Four. For the City of Geneva Council Chamber, this provides for a maximum of 29 individuals who may attend in person. As such, you will note that several of the Aldermen are attending virtually, and the remainder are here in person. Staff members are also participating, some virtually and some in person. As a requirement of the Open Meetings Act, I am required to be physically present at the meeting location. This meeting may be viewed via livestream on YouTube or the public access channel on AT&amp;T, Channel 99, or Comcast, Channel 10, or by accessing the meeting directly through the link provided on the agenda. In addition, public comments may be submitted anytime during this meeting to publiccomment@genova-il.us. Please note, comments received during the meeting will be acknowledged and placed into the record of the meeting but will not be read aloud during the meeting. And Alderman Burkhart has just joined us, ladies and gentlemen. With that, I'd like to introduce a brief subject matter in the spirit of Black History Month. You note that we had a brief video a couple weeks ago. This one, I think, is also very poignant and provides all of us and those tuning in with another opportunity to learn about not only the struggles but the successes of our black brothers and sisters.
Greensboro Four were yours truly Joe McNeil, David Richmond, Junior Blair, and Frank Lucane. We all lived in the same dormitory. I think we all were very young. I was the youngest, I was 17. I reacted to the Jim Crow South with anger. I did not believe for one minute that I was a second slash citizen, that I was inferior in any way to whites, greens, whatever. I couldn't live the lie. We decided to take a stand. Let's go. Let's do it. So, we purchased small items, sundry items, to establish the fact that we were customers. And then we sat down on a stool and asked for a cup of coffee. And the store manager told us that he wasn't on service. Local establishment grossly underestimated our anger and the ability to hang in there. So when we were leaving the store, the Associated Press was there, and they said, "Hey, boys, what you gonna do?" We said, "Well, we're gonna come back, and we're gonna keep coming back until you decide to serve us." We started growing. First day four, the second day, probably 16 and 20. It was organic. It was out of its own, kept growing. We decided that whatever actions we were gonna take, they're gonna be nonviolent. We remained nonviolent. On the third day, it started to get rough. At any time, we could've been carried out of that store in a fine box. We didn't want to be modest, and we had to do what we needed to do.
I was a student at Fisk University in Nashville, February 1st, 1960. We heard that four young black men sat in at a lunch counter in Greensboro. We had our first sit-in in Nashville on February 13th. I'm really amused sometimes because people say, "Oh, you were so brave." And the truth is, I was afraid the whole time. But the choice was to do what was necessary to end segregation or to tolerate segregation. And that just was not acceptable.
Greensboro became the message. It was like, if they can do it in Greensboro, we too can do it. There were young people and people not so young, adults, in major cities outside of the South, participated, sitting in at lunch counters. They were picketing the stores to support the students in itself. And you had people like Lawrence King Jr. saying things like, "By sitting down, we were standing up for the very best in American tradition."
And I think that's really important for people to know, that it was ordinary people, quote unquote, ordinary, like themselves, who did everything for the civil rights movement, that it was really a people's movement.
These young people injected something very meaningful, something really beautiful. So you may not have a lot of money, you may not have a lot of power, but you have what Dr. King and Gandhi and others call soul power. Just using your body as a nonviolent instrument, as a tool, you can change things. You can inspire hundreds and thousands and millions of people to speak out, to speak
I walked away with an attitude that if our country is screwed up, don't give up. Unscrew it, don't give up, which in retrospect is pretty good for a bunch of teenagers.
I think many of us recall, whether through history books or personal experience, if we're of that age, Rosa Parks did the same thing. She stood up by sitting down. And of course, many of us probably know Claudette Colvin, who actually sat on the bus and did not give up her seat nine months prior to Rosa Parks doing so. So there's a lot to learn. I'm grateful for allowing this opportunity to show these films and show these messages that I think we all benefit from. So thank you very much. With that, I'd like to introduce a special guest, the chairwoman of the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, Ms. Jill Johnson, who is with us tonight to provide us an update on their work with respect to the City of Geneva's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force.
Okay. Can you guys hear me on my end?
Sure can. Thank you, Jill.
Okay. Great. So, tonight, we're kind of here to kind of let you guys know where we're at. We are not here to kind of, you know, to get in all the weeds on everything we've done, but we kind of felt we owed an update to the council and to our city as well. So, we wanna, Ben's got the slides going here, and we're gonna kind of start with our timeline on how we have kind of gotten to where we are. So Ben, you wanna go to the timeline portion? We, first of all, thank you, yep, there you go. Okay, thanks. So, first, I just wanna kind of talk about what we've accomplished this past year. We have hosted virtual engagement events with stakeholders so that we can prioritize strategic plan priorities for the coming year. With COVID, we've been, we've been doing a lot of things virtually, and we were lucky that we were able to get a decent amount of attendance to come and engage so we can get things going with the next, the next part of the strategic plan. We also continued our ongoing support for the 2020 census. And right now, we are currently, what kind of the reason we're here, is we are researching, we're continuing our research to refine the recommendation regarding the DEI task force as detailed in our strategic plan. So, since SPAC last met with city council, the committee has continued to work diligently. So tonight, we want to provide the community some of our recommendations that SPAC plans to advance for city council's considerations in the weeks and months ahead. We also wanted to share kind of how we got here, what we're doing right now, and where we're going next. We are trying to work with this as fast as we can, but we're trying to be thoughtful in everything that we do so we can get to, get the best group together when we form this committee or this task force. So, we, right now, where we started, as most of you know, the task force was prioritized with the objective three of the quality of life portion for the 2025 strategic plan. Under that, under the City of Geneva is recognized as an inclusive community and welcoming to people of all ages, backgrounds, and ethnicities. We have it, that we will have a DEI task force by 2025 within that spec. In 2019, we started these discussions, and our biggest question that we had to ask ourselves was, what is gonna be the role of this task force? We kind of went into this blindly, as we all know, and we took several steps in order to, to make progress on this. So, the assignment, over the time, we wanted to help identify and define the role of the task force. We wanted to develop the framework for the task force, and we wanted to determine what it is that task force will do. Once SPAC did, thank you, Ben, once SPAC set out to answer these basic questions and started research, it did, it became quickly apparent that there is not one solution. Many other communities are having similar conversations. We did learn that, you know, obviously, and especially with events in the past year, these DEI or similar task forces seem to be popping up across the country. We focused in on some communities such as Adina, Minnesota, Lake Oswego, Oregon, and even Naperville, which is our close and proximity demographic, but all of these cities and towns have similar demographics and population as Geneva. So, to do that, it's important for us to recognize the need for the meaningful and thoughtful action, which is why we've been really kind of taking our time with this and wanted to do this right, get proper people to educate us more so that we can further this, this task. So to do that, we ourselves, we had to recognize our own, our own positions of privilege. We had to come to terms with the fact that bias cannot be eliminated. And of course, the biggest thing we learned in all these conversations was that, no matter how uncomfortable any of these conversations are, we have to keep having them, which is why I think it's gonna be so important for this DEI task force in some of the framework that they do. We have met with, I'll get to your slide in a minute, Ben, but we have met, we have done, we have met with experts. We've had people come into our meetings to kind of help us with the framework so we can put it together and basically give us additional guidance on how we can proceed with this. It just gave us a good foundation for our research process. We also attended webinars, workshops, and we continue to read literature on this. Again, we're not experts by any subject, but we're continuing to educate ourselves. So, where are we now? We met with council in 2020, if you remember. We met with you during our strategic plan. We met with you at the October combined joint meeting, and then we also discussed this at the strategic plan workshop in November. We shared our initial findings and our research to council and staff, and we sought feedback from everyone. Once we got that feedback, we continued to work and refine the recommendation. Again, we're a committee of nine people who meet once a month for maybe an hour and a half or two, so coming, as we got closer to the end, and it seemed like, you know, we wanted, we wanted to speed it up, but it felt like we didn't want to push all this into working meetings. So we've been dividing up into subgroups and kind of dividing and conquering what we can do to make these recommendations. So, we've got subcommittees for communications aspect of the task force. We have, we're putting together contacts. We have a great committee that's putting together contacts for community partners. We have a committee for the interview process, and we're also planning a book discussion, which we'll talk about in the coming moments here. But all of this, we think, will be helpful when we're looking for applicants. So, what's next? If you want to go to the next slide, Ben, thank you. So, right now, we are working with staff to finalize its recommendation so we can actually put forth a resolution to establish a task force. We want to plan for engagement and recruitment of the task members in the coming weeks and months. We want to engage community partners, and again, those subcommittees that we have, I think are gonna do a really good job of kind of getting in and making sure that we're giving the correct amount of time to each individual item that needs to be addressed. As far as the task force goes, the biggest thing was that we wanted, you know, we were focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We had to recognize that all dimensions of diversity, all of them including race, gender, sexual orientation, and identity, just to name a few. In researching, it became clear that a task force isn't a solution to any one issue, but it is a step towards helping the community and organizations become more aware, better understand, and ultimately develop recommendations for improving when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion. So our role, or the role of the task force, like other communities, SPAC believes there is opportunity to improve with respects to, with respect to identifying and addressing barriers that often come with inclusion in civic processes. We wanted to identify educational and training opportunities for city council staff and residents. We also would like it to help us, and to help establish, accomplish this. SPAC believes the task force would play a key role in engaging residents and experts to fully understand issues and develop a work plan for the future. As far as the framework goes, it is gonna be compiled of a nine-member task force, community members that can speak to or identify with different dimensions of diversity. We originally went into this, and this is where we're at right now, is the timeline is two years. We want to give it two years to develop the work plan. We want to conduct community engagement activities, develop recommendations, and ultimately determine the best format for ongoing work and education and activities that just relate to diversity, equity, and inclusion within the organization and the community. Again, we hope that these community partners that we can identify will also be able to help us with that as well. The task force will work in tandem with SPAC. We are hoping, well, no, we are planning on having a SPAC representative as a liaison so they can report back to SPAC with progress, and then ultimately, myself or Ben can report back to city council and staff on how progress is being made with that. All right, the establishment of it. So it's gonna be established through a resolution that will be approved by city council. Again, that's not what we're here for tonight. Tonight, we're just kind of here to give you a quick overview and some Cliff's Notes on where we are. After that, SPAC will play a lead role in recruitment of task force members. Once established, the task force would have up to 24 months to complete its initial work, report back to city council and community, and the community, and ultimately make recommendations for the next steps. A lot of the communities we've looked at, such as Adina, Minnesota, I'll say, that's just the one that came to the top of my head, that was, I believe, a six-month stint where they met maybe every other week. They were meeting for a few hours at a time every other week, and they got it done relatively quick, but that was, at the end, that was, they made the recommendation, and that was it. We hope that this is something that might, that we'll be able to expand beyond this two-year timeframe and eventually become a subcommittee such as the NRC and ICDC underneath the SPAC umbrella. So, let's see. And then, obviously, we needed to recognize these steps so we could figure out what to go from there. Our objectives, as envisioned, the task force would be empowered and support in efforts to research and make recommendations that ensure Geneva is welcoming and open to all. Engage residents, stakeholders, and intergovernmental partners. Like I said before, that's what we're, you know, the library, the school district. We plan on having all these tools available to the, to the committee or the diversity task, the DEI task force, so they can contact people as they wish when they start to have their events. We want to keep evaluating our city practices so we can make recommendations to address any barriers to inclusion, coordinate educational opportunities within the community to promote a greater awareness. We need to educate our, we realize that it's, it's important to educate residents on all these relevant topics. Want to assist in identifying strategic plan priorities and identifying any relevant action items for inclusion in the strategic plan. So we just want to keep chipping away at anything that could pertain to this task force within our plan by 2025. So, in closing, once this is established, the months ahead will be about taking thoughtful actions. We want to engage the community and stakeholders as much as we can. We want to build relationships. We, most of all, out of all this that we've learned, is that we need to listen. Just, we need to listen and learn and educate ourselves to the best of our abilities. And then, let's see, trying to make sure I covered everything. Yeah, I mean, we just, we need to make sure that we lay the framework. We wanna, we're holding ourselves. We are, we want to hold ourselves accountable for recognizing the value that diversity adds to our community and to Geneva. We want to create a more informed public, and we ultimately just want to ensure that all Geneva residents are able to fully participate in life here. So I guess at the end of the day, that's our ultimate goal, that everyone's quality of life is wonderful here in Geneva. So, again, we're not attempting to be experts in any way, shape, or form. We feel that we've done the work and research to be able to put the task force together and to get the most well-qualified individuals on the task force. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over, I believe, to Ben. Ben, do you want, did you, do you want to talk about the book discussion, please?
If I can just make a few closing comments here, I just wanted to remind everyone, you know, thank you for city council's time this evening. There's not necessarily action taken tonight, but I think Chairperson Johnson and myself would welcome any comments or feedback. As Jill indicated, this continues to be a work in progress, and I will, I want to give SPAC credit. Again, as Jill mentioned, a volunteer community that takes their time to meet, meet virtually and has rolled with all the changes that COVID has presented over the last year, but it's a group that has really taken, I think, this assignment to heart. So amongst all the other activities that have, have happened, they have continued to look, to look into this. And I will say too, that they have, SPAC has been very careful not to be prescriptive, not to be presumptuous, but really to look at what's working well in other communities and what can apply here in Geneva. As Jill said, not to address any one issue, but to try and build a framework for really holding ourselves accountable, looking towards the future, and identifying opportunities, not, not just to improve, but to make sure that, you know, we as an organization or community put a, put a spotlight on the value that diversity adds to us here. But again, there's still, there's still work to be done. Again, I think it's purposeful that SPAC is going down the path of looking at a task force to help really, there's still a lot of work, a lot of listening to be done before we get to final recommendations. And I think SPAC's, SPAC's recognized in looking into these topics that they are expansive, that actions do need to be purposeful, that there are processes and things to be mindful of. So I think there's, I think there's a lot of energy, and I think there's a group that's very excited to come back here in the near future with its final recommendations. And, and I will share, before we open up for maybe any comments or questions that Jill or I can answer this evening, one of the things they've been working on too is, working in their subcommittees, is starting to really reach out and build, build the framework for future action, identifying some individuals and organizations that serve our community that may want to have input in this going forward, that may want to be involved with this in the months and years ahead. And through that work, one of the things I think we're excited to share this evening is, save, save the date for Saturday, March 20th, working with Mayor Burns and our wonderful former neighbors and partners just down the street from us, the Geneva Public Library. We're excited to be helping facilitate a led book discussion with Mayor Burns, and we have, I believe, Tracy Ellis from the Illinois Math and Science Academy will be joining us that afternoon. So what I can say now is, stay tuned to the city's website for information on how to register for that event, information on the book selection, and additional details that will be coming out about that. So, with that being said, I think Jill, unless there's anything else you'd like to add, I think we should open it up for the mayor, city council, if anyone has any questions for us. Oh, and I should add too, anyone who is interested in tuning in, SPAC does meet virtually tomorrow evening, but again, the link is available for any members of the public who wish to chime in as this work continues.
Any questions or comments for either Chairwoman Johnson or Mr. McCready, Alderman Bruno, and then Alderman Marx?
Thank you, mayor, and thanks, Jill, and thanks, Ben. Unless I missed it, when do you expect to have this, this task force seated?
If I may, I think SPAC right now is working to finalize its recommendation, which it hopes to bring, you know, if, if all continues on, on target, hopefully bringing that forward to you in the month ahead. So once, once approved and finalized, SPAC is working diligently now, that's the word of the evening here, diligently. We're working diligently to bring for, start to identify people who may be interested in this, our organizations that know individuals who may be interested, so really, we can, you know, be ready to hit the ground running and start recruiting members there. That will, of course, depend on the level of interest there is in the community, but once established, we'd hope that the committee is meeting probably by the summer or late spring, or the task force, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Alderman Marx?
Jill, nice job. Great, great work. A lot done in a short period of time.
Thank you.
Just one quick question. I know we, we talked about the nine members last time, and that was, do you guys have any idea of a breakdown of that? How many citizens? Have we looked at house of worships to join? We were looking also at academia to have some people. Has that come to any kind of, have we kind of thrashed that out a little bit, or is that still in process right now?
We are. It's still, it's still relatively in process, but we, we, that is part of, we do have partners such as the ones you just mentioned on our, like, we've been talking about, so we have these subcommittees, and the subcommittees, we put together a big spreadsheet, and we're, you know, it's clubs at the high school that could, that maybe we could partner up with, different local organizations. There was, we did have some houses of worship on there. I'm not sure exactly which ones they were. We will, we, once we get down to the weeds, probably in the next couple weeks, we'll have a very accurate list of all the partners. We plan on reaching out. We do have a nice list going on right now, but yes, they, we, we aren't, we aren't trying going on right now. But yes, they, we, we aren't, we aren't trying to leave any particular organization out if it can be helpful to the process. So.
That sounds good. I just, I just wanted to see how that was coming along. No, very good. Thank you for the answer, Jill. And again, thank the committee for all the work. I mean, you guys done a lot of heavy lifting in a very short period of time, it looks like.
Thank you, Alderman.
Anyone else virtually, before I recognize anyone here in the chamber? Alderman McGowan.
Thank you, Mayor. Jill, thank you very much, and Ben as well. Thank you for this presentation. I just think it's really great. It's encouraging to hear of all the strides that SPAC has been making as far as addressing the creation of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force. I, I'm just really happy to hear about everything that was discussed and all of the great ideas. And I think it's a wonderful accomplishment just to be able to say that Geneva, the city of Geneva, has, is going to have this official task force to address diversity, equity, and inclusion. And it makes me feel proud to live in Geneva, and the fact that I can say to people, yeah, the city that I live in has this new task force. I think that's awesome. So thank you again. Thank you to all the members of SPAC for all your hard work and dedication. That's ongoing. And I'm looking forward to the book discussion. I hope that many Geneva residents will participate. I know they will. And lastly, I just really love the educational component that was mentioned, and I hope that that's just an ongoing thing, because it's a wonderful way to build community and to provide opportunities for learning. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions or comments for either Chairwoman Johnson or Mr. McCready? Thank you both. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four, ladies and gentlemen, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments to be offered this evening by any member of the council? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council. All those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Alderman Swanson makes the motion.
Bruno seconds.
Alderman Bruno seconds. When Ms. Dawkins is ready, we'll take the roll call.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye. Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kossarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda has been approved with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We skip down to item number 10 on the council agenda, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city administrator to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Municipal bills for payment total $3,957,062.44.
Bruno moves that we pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes a motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available on the city's website and in the council members' packet. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Alderman Kossarog makes the second. Any last-minute questions or comments regarding the bills as presented? Whenever Ms. Dawkins is available, we'll take the roll call.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kossarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Item 10 passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Skip down to item 13, folks, new business and public comment. Is there any new business that any member of the council wishes to present or share?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir. Alderman Kossarog.
I had noticed, and I had heard from a resident, that next week's discussion on MS Landing is a city council meeting, not a committee of the whole meeting. And so I just wanted to clarify that that is accurate, and I guess inquire, is that a normal course of action?
Yeah, so, if I may, Mayor, anytime we have an item that's coming as a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission or Historic Preservation Commission, they come straight to the city council because you don't have a recommending body recommending to another recommending body, which is the committee of the whole. So they go straight from either the Plan Commission or the Historic Preservation, straight to a city council meeting. And then you may also recall, in 2019, we changed our meeting schedules so that we have committee of the, city council and committee of the whole meetings on the first and third Mondays, leaving the second and fourth Mondays open for topics such that may have either a lot of attention or may, we know, will take a little longer. So therefore, we're not starting those discussions at nine o'clock at night. Instead, we have a whole evening dedicated to that. So this is in keeping with what our current practice is.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you to the hard-working members of the Public Works Department for all your awesome efforts in the snow removal and keeping the roads clear for vehicles. We've certainly had a very interesting winter, and I just want to express my appreciation for, for all the hard work that the Public Works Department has done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCready or Ms. Dawkins? Anyone waiting in the chat room to speak?
No email for me.
No email?
No attendees online this evening.
Okay. With that, ladies and gentlemen, entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Motion by Alderman Swanson. A roll call vote is necessary. Ms. Dawkins?
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kossarog?
Kossarog, aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, tonight's city council meeting is adjourned. Give us 30 seconds to switch over to committee of the whole mode. order. I kindly ask our city administrator, Ms. Dawkins, to take the roll call.
Bruno?
Bruno, here.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, here.
Ruby?
Ruby, here.
Caven? Kilburg?
Kilburg, here.
Kossarog?
Here.
Meladra?
Meladra, here.
Marks?
Marks, here.
McGowan?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Just for the record, ladies and gentlemen, Alderman Caven is busy with work this evening. Item two is to approve the regular committee of the whole minutes from February 1st, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Bruno, so.
Alderman Kossarog makes the motion. Alderman Bruno makes the second. Any questions or comments regarding the contents of those minutes? Ms. Dawkins, whenever you're available, take the roll.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kossarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Bruno Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
I believe that was 41 aye votes. With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, the minutes have been approved from February 1st, 2021. Items of business, ladies and gentlemen. Item 3A is to consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a plat of easement grant for landscape, excuse me, for landscape purposes in the Greenhouse Point subdivision. Happy to entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Swanson. And a second by Alderman Marks?
Yeah, it was Meladra.
It was Meladra.
Oh, that was Meladra. I'm sorry. Alderman Meladra, forgive me, sir. Ms. Dawkins?
Sure. So the plat for the city council's consideration grants a lease landscape easement along the easterly right-of-way line of Western Avenue to allow for the placement of parkway trees away from the existing overhead power lines from the developer of Greenhouse Point. The plat has been reviewed by legal and city staff and is ready for execution upon approval. And this evening, we have Brian Schreiber, Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer, is present with us virtually to answer any questions you may have.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Schreiber? I don't, Alderman Kilburg?
Has our arborist reviewed this and been involved in tree selection at all? That I can't certify to. I don't know if the, if the arborist looked at it or not.
Is it safe to assume, Mr. Schreiber, that between now and the next council meeting?
We can certainly do that, yes.
Do you feel it's appropriate we ask him that question as it relates to the, the variety of the tree and the distance at play here?
So just, and just to clarify, this is just the easement this evening. It's not the landscape plan, but we'll make sure to have those conversations.
Well, the easement's requested because they want to plant trees further to the east. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct. And I know the, the electric department staff looked at the trees. They have a criteria for trees that they allow far, as far as the proximity to the overhead wires.
Okay, so there's, there's a protocol in place, and it's just not legal looking at it, and engineers, that it's, it's people that, that have an expertise in this area. I just, I just don't want to see trees planted that we're going to have to trim out or hollow out because all of a sudden, they're, they're 15 or 20 feet taller than anticipated, and then all of a sudden, they start to infringe on our electrical services. So, that's the only reason I asked the question. Thank you.
Anyone else for Mr. Schreiber? We have a motion and a second on the floor. No other questions or comments. We kindly ask our city administrator to please take the roll call.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kossarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, item 3A has been adopted in advance to the council. Item 3B is to consider draft resolution authorizing the purchase of a Tonka, a Pierce Enforcer fire truck from McQueen Emergency Group through HGAC Consortium in an amount not to exceed $1,200,000. Is there a motion? Alderman McGowan makes the motion? Alderman Kossarog seconds that motion, and we ask Ms. Dawkins to provide a brief summary.
Thank you. So you may recall, we spoke briefly about the fire truck in the fiscal year 22 budget presentation. The request before the committee of the whole is to purchase the fire department truck from the Houston Galveston Area Council Consortium. The request is before the Cal this evening due to the lead time required for truck delivery. Delivery will not take place until fiscal year 22. The proposed truck would replace Truck 206, which is a 1994 Pierce Aero. Fire trucks in the city of Geneva are planned for 20 to 25 years of frontline service, and the NFPA 1901 Standard for Automotive Fire Apparatus recommends that fire apparatus over 25 years old should be replaced. Maintenance and repair expenses have been increasing on Truck 206 over the past several years, with the most recent repair requiring a custom fabrication of parts as spare parts are no longer available. Truck 206 will be surplus and sold at auction. The fire department does not maintain a reserve truck. So this evening, Fire Chief Antonori is present if you have any additional questions. Again, I just want to reiterate that this is so that we can get the process started, get the truck ordered. They lock the price in, and then it would actually, delivery would take place in fiscal year 2022. And we would also, you may recall during the budget, we talked about financing the vehicle. When it gets closer to that time, then we would find our best financing option for the vehicle. So, with that.
Ladies and gentlemen, questions or comments for either the city administrator or the chief, Alderman Kilburg?
Chief, just a couple of questions. How does this 1.2 million compare with our
How does this 1.2 million compare with our last purchase, which was in, was that in '18, I believe?
Our last purchase was an engine. This is an aerial ladder. So our last, yeah, so completely different, but put in perspective, the engine was $650,000, and this is.
Yeah.
Because it's double, because it's an aerial.
We have been, we've been capitalizing this for some time. What has this been, on a five-year schedule?
Well, our trucks, on average, over the last 100 years, have lasted between 25 and 30 years at a time.
Right.
And this will be the fourth truck since the 1940s, and we project this to last into the mid 2040s. And we expect this to last between 20 and 25 years also.
Right. I mean, as, as far as essentially saving for this, this piece of equipment, we've, we've been capitalizing for that, haven't we? Maybe that's a staff question.
No. What we did is we contemplated, again, you'll remember in the budget, you'll see the revenue and the expenditure, but that's because we contemplate financing it over a seven-year period.
I guess that's all I have right now anyhow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else virtually? Questions or comments for the chief or the city administrator? Any council member here in the chamber? Oh, yes. Alderman Kossarog. Excuse me.
Chief, I was just wondering, you know, when you buy a new car, there's usually some cool updates and things like that. Obviously, this isn't going to be the coolest stuff, but are there things that help you do your job better that didn't exist maybe 20 years ago or things like that? Things that help protect our citizens or make us quicker to react to?
Yeah, matter of fact, on this, this truck, which is a Quint, and a Quint is a truck and an engine, so it carries water, hoses, ladders, combines the values of both of them. This is the first single-axle platform 110-foot ladder on the market. So today, with our current truck, we can't reach residential homes because of the configuration of the truck to tip the ladder work. Majority of our fires are in residence, so this will allow us to turn the 110-foot ladder to the tip, go to the roof, work safely off the ladder rather than being on the roof. It's got a platform for rescues downtown or from our mid-rises, you know, four to five stories, much better than what we have today. Of course, it's got the modern safety features of crash resistance, rollover resistance, safety for the members that didn't exist in the unit we bought almost 30 years ago. So, and then from air quality and health and safety, it's got the clean engine, so we're not going to generate the diesel smoke anymore that has contributed to firefighter cancers all over the United States over the last 20 years. So significant changes in technology take place every, as long as we go. It's like a quantum leap every time we buy, because we're buying, you know, we don't go through things in 10 years, it takes us 30 years. So, if that makes sense.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Anyone else here in the chamber or virtually? Questions or comments for city administrator or the chief? The chief has explained to me earlier in a private meeting, that is, I will share publicly, that the color of this truck will be plaid. Is that true, chief?
Not exactly, but it'll be our traditional black over red.
Just like Alderman Marks' shirt.
We could, we could take a look at that, but black over red, and it should look smart and be a good functioner. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. A roll call vote is necessary to approve. Ms. Dawkins, whenever you're ready.
Kossarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, item 3B has been advanced to the city council for further consideration and adoption. Thank you, chief. Item 3C, folks, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a water extension agreement with Waste Management of Illinois Incorporated. Is there a motion?
Kossarog moves. So moves.
Alderman Kossarog makes the motion. Is there a second?
Bruno, seconds.
Alderman Bruno makes the second. With that, we turn the floor over to Ms. Dawkins for a summary of this topic.
Thank you. Back in March 2020, the city of Geneva acknowledged receipt of a petition for extension of the city's water main outside the corporate limits pursuant to 65 ILCS 511-149-1 and authorized staff to negotiate an agreement with Waste Management of Illinois Inc. On behalf of the property owners in the area, commonly referred to as Old Kirk Road, Reed Road, East Lane, and Cherry Lane located in unincorporated Geneva Township. Design engineering for the project was finalized on February 10th, 2021. This required step had to be completed prior to execution of an extension agreement. The terms of the proposed agreement state that Waste Management is responsible for securing all easements and costs associated with the installation of the system extension. Upon construction completion, the city would then assume ownership and maintain the new water main, and the properties will become customers of the city water utility. This evening with us virtually, I do have Rod Stipe, the district manager from Waste Management. Public Works Director Babica is on the line, and I believe Assistant Public Works Director Brian Schreiber might still be on the line as well, so if you have any other questions.
Ladies and gentlemen, with that topic summary, are there any questions or comments for either the city administrator, Mr. Stipe of Waste Management, our director of public works, Mr. Babica, or our assistant public works, Mr. Schreiber? Not seeing any, Alderman Kilburg? Yes, sir.
Have we completed any additional testing as it relates to water quality? Have we seen any further deterioration? I don't know if I'm phrasing that correctly, but I'm just wondering if we have a status report or an update on, on where things stand in, in the area that we're discussing this evening.
I believe, yeah, I'm going to refer to our, our friend and colleague from Waste Management, Mr. Stipe. Mr. Stipe, could you address Alderman Kilburg's question?
Yes. In the, in the approximately year that it's been since we last met with you, we have continued to monitor the situation on a quarterly basis, and there has been no significant change in the situation.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Questions for either the three gentlemen virtually or Ms. Dawkins? Alderman Bruno, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I think this is probably for Mr. Schreiber. Will, will this water main, long-term, integrate any way into the southeast area master plan, or will that be coming off couches?
We're going to direct your question, Alderman Bruno, to Mr. Babica. I believe Mr. Schreiber has a slight glitch with technology. So, Mr. Babica, could you address that question?
The extension of the water mains along Old Kirk Road and Reed Road and Cherry are, other than being an integrational, an integrated part of the city system, will not be connected through to the south, future Southeast Industrial Park.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else virtually? Anyone in the chamber? Any questions or comments? We have a motion, ladies and gentlemen. We have a second. Ms. Dawkins will take the roll call.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kossarog?
Kossarog, aye.
With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, item 3C has been advanced to the city council. Item 3D, ladies and gentlemen, is to consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of the I Prime New Account application between PMA and the city of Geneva. Is there a motion?
Bruno, so moves.
Alderman McGowan gets the motion. Alderman Bruno gets the second. Ms. Dawkins, a summary, please.
Sure. So through PMA, which is one of our investment brokers, the city has a Harris Bank money market account that holds idle cash and allows for the transfer of funds for purchases and maturities. PMA is terminating their agreement with Harris Bank and is implementing the Illinois Public Reserve's Investment Management Trust I Prime Money Market Account in its place. The I Prime product has a Standard and Poor's AAAM rating, which is the highest local government investment pool rating. For comparison purposes, on January 31st, 2021, the yield for a Harris Bank money market was 0.01% compared to the I Prime yield of 0.08%. The I Prime product complies with the city's adopted investment policy. Treasurer McQueen, he has also been consulted and recommends approval of the new account. With us this evening virtually is Finance Director Cruz to answer any additional questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Dawkins. Any questions or comments for our finance director, Ms. Cruz? I don't see any hands up virtually. Anyone here in the chamber? Ladies and gentlemen, I believe we're ready for the roll call vote. Ms. Dawkins?
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kossarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, item 3D is advanced to the city council. Anyone joining us remotely, Mr. McCready? Who wish to speak?
No attendees at this time.
Any emails to consider?
No emails.
Ladies and gentlemen, any new business? If not, a motion to adjourn is in order. Alderman, Alderman Kossarog, with extraordinary enthusiasm, makes the motion to adjourn. Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.[1755.28]